Getting together this year. To just do some introductions, we've had a lot of new administrative staff start. Um, in our office, and so I thought it was a nice opportunity to just kind of say. Hi to everybody, so.
Wait, okay, wait a minute.
So I want to start off by introducing Lee Moore Gutman, who is our new Director of Education. Lee Moore joined us in. November, Lee Moore, you want to say hi?
Hi, everybody. I'm so happy to be on the Zoom. And see everyone here.
So why don't you just give us a sentence about what you're doing, what you've been up to?
So I'm the Director of Education at Anshay Emeth. And um, I started in late November, and I've been doing a lot of catching up. And in the past week or two, we've been working a lot on our sixth and seventh grade retreat, which is happening this weekend. So. There's a lot to do with all of that. So we're just about finished. So we're excited.
Wonderful. And at the same time, we can do a shameless plug that during the sixth and seventh grade retreat, then. All of the professional staff goes away to camp.
Yep.
Lay leaders are going to be leading services Friday night, so.
Exciting.
I would encourage everyone to come because it's the best service of the year. Thank you, Lee Moore, and welcome. And now I'm going to ask Jen Corrella, who is our Temple Administrator. To introduce some of the other people who you may not have met yet.
Hi, everybody. Jessica Lara Guerrero is our new Administrative Assistant. She's. Assisting me and she's assisting Lee Moore with Religious School. Jess, are you on? Say a few words.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica. I'm just an assistant. I'm Lee Moore's assistant for Religious School and the Temple. So here I am. If you guys need anything. I'm the one to direct or have a call to, so if anything, I'm here.
When did you join us, Jessica?
I joined in July of last year.
Excellent. So welcome. Who else, Jen?
Uh, we also have Marla Bessisparis. She is the new admin to the. I guess it's all the professional staff, really, the clergy. Marla, you around too?
I'm here. Hi, everyone. I'm Marla. Um, I just started. Actually, it'll be a month tomorrow. That went quite fast. Um, and I've been working with Nancy, who just left and retired. Um, I'll be taking over her position and working with Rabbi Basley as well as Rabbi Lotenberg and Cantor Stanton. And I look forward to, I know some of you, I've already recognized some of your faces, so I'm looking forward to meeting. Um, many of of the rest of you as well, so feel free to stop by and say hi.
Excellent. Welcome, Marla.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have Kevin Watkins. He is the um, new Communications Admin. He's handling a lot of our Friday service sheets, bulletins, you name it. He's the guy doing it. And he's upside down right now.
Oh, is it? Oh, geez.
As long as he's not underwater.
I I figured out how to do many things on Zoom. Rotating an image is not one of them.
Actually, you're fine. It's everybody. Everybody else is upside down.
If you have a remote camera, it's probably upside down.
Okay, well. Uh. Spider-Man right now. How are you doing, Kevin?
I get a lovely pretty, would you straighten up?
I hope you're not dizzy.
Well, anyway, I'm Kevin. Uh, nice to meet everyone. I started last month. Um, I'll be doing the emails and the bulletin. And uh, taking over for Ann. And um, thanks to everyone who's been stopping in. Everyone's been really nice, and it's nice to join the team.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kevin. Welcome. I'm going to encourage everybody, if you're in the building during the day, to definitely pop in, introduce yourselves, say hi. Um, there's a lot of new faces, and so it's really nice for them to acclimate and meet us as well. So thanks, Jen, and. Welcome, everybody. So it's very exciting. Um. Now I'm going to keep going, and I'm going to invite Marvin Zetsker to just talk to us for a little while about. Um, the Endowment Fund. So Marvin chairs our Endowment Committee now. And. We hear a lot of talk about the Endowment and Endowment Fund, so I thought this was a nice opportunity for Marvin to just give us a high level overview. Of what the Endowment is. Um, take it away.
Thank you, Allison. Um, I'm assuming everybody can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the temple has an endowment. Like many institutions, the purpose of the endowment. Is to help fund and support the various special projects and activities initiatives within the temple. Some of the lectures, the programs, some of the dedicated activities that we have, those are not always funded by the operating budget. Those are sometimes funded by the Endowment Fund. Funds within the Endowment. Come from contributions and donations made by individuals over many years. And those donations could be in memory or in honor of someone or for any other purpose. Contributions made by the Endowment, to the Endowment, I should say. Are specifically dedicated for the purpose of ensuring the financial security of of Anshay Emeth. Um, and that enables people to create a legacy for themselves, for their family. That enables them to perhaps support a specific activity or a function at the temple or just the general funds. The Endowment, as Allison mentioned, is run, um, I'm sorry, is overseen by an independent Endowment Board. This is separate and apart from the Temple Board. There's a chair, myself, several trustees. We meet several times a year. Funds within the Endowment are managed by an independent outside advisory team. We meet with them several times a year to go over the investments and how they're performing. We also discuss. How much we are going to contribute to the temple's operating budget. Sometimes that's a request from the board. Sometimes that's a request about specific, specific activities, but that's the general purpose, and that's how we manage it. We do provide a nominal amount on an annual basis to support the temple's operations. But as I said, a lot of it is dedicated to specific activities and specific initiatives within the temple. One of the goals of the Endowment is to continue to grow it to a level. So that it is able to financially support the temple even more than it does far into the future. In all fairness, an endowment is probably the most perpetual investment uh, fund that has ever existed. It doesn't have a life. It goes on forever. As we hope the temple will go on forever. So the purpose of the Endowment is to support the temple, guarantee its future. And allow us to continue to grow the temple and the temple's endowment to be able to work simultaneously to support that going forward. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I didn't know how much detail you wanted me to get into, but that's generally the overview that I had prepared.
So does anybody have any questions specifically related to the Endowment?
You know, part of our. Oh, Mike Brown has a question.
Yeah, what's the investment policy for the Endowment? Is it written? And do we have access to it?
Um. Uh, do you have access to it? We do have a specific investment policy. It is broadly invested in a relatively conservative allocation that I would approximate as about sixty forty equities to fixed income. And as I said, it's overseen by an independent investment advisor. It's a group out of Rabbi, correct me if I got this wrong, Merrill Lynch, I think. Um, who's been doing this for a very long time. Pretty much the group focuses on endowments and institutional investments. And it's with their assistance that we manage this. And then, of course, the people on the Endowment Board have their input to be able to try and. Uh, give us a little bit of their input and guidance into where they think we should be positioned. But we do take the posture that this is a long term investment. So we're not worried about day to day, month to month, or even quarter to quarter moves within the markets. We're looking at this as a long term investment, and on that basis, I think we've managed it effectively well.
We've been working with our investor for. For a long time now. I I know since I came to the temple twelve years ago, we've been using him. Rabbi Miller, I know, has a long history. He's on the call right now with um, with Rick as well. Uh, I believe through Bank of America. Um, uh, um. And uh, having a healthy, robust endowment is really important because it helps us weather whatever unknown storms we have up ahead. This is part of our. Being as transparent as possible with um, our. Uh, finances and what we do at the temple to make sure that we're safe and secure for the future.
Absolutely.
Uh, Lori.
Hi, um, are they, it's same. We're we're one in the same. Um.
No, we're not.
What investment vehicles are you using? Are you using um? Are you using active? Are you using Merrill Lynch funds? Are they charging us a basis point fee on the overall endowment?
It is not Merrill Lynch Dedicated Funds, and I refer to Merrill Lynch, which is now owned by Bank of America. So Rabbi, you're correct, it's Bank of America, but. Merrill Lynch is the investment firm. It is not Merrill Lynch Funds. In fact. I don't believe there are any Merrill Lynch Funds in it, uh, and it's all mutual funds. We don't deal in any individual securities of any kind. It's all mutual funds.
Is it index funds by any chance?
No, it is not index funds. It is, it's a broadly, I'm sorry?
It should be. There's zero reason for active management. It's been proven over long terms. I'm a CFA.
Okay, and I'm a retired, and I'm a retired Senior VP at Morgan Stanley. So that's a debate that, you know, has gone on for a long time, continues to go on, you know. Uh, another.
Take it offline with you, but.
There you go.
It was one.
If you guys have uh, um, uh, personal questions to ask Marvin or or issues to that you want to take offline, by all means.
Yeah, love to.
Um, Fred.
Hi, thanks. Not Fred, but Fred's here. Um, yeah, just curious, what percent approximately of the endowment is restricted versus unrestricted funds, since it was referenced, some of it's restricted? Meaning restricted to a specific purpose versus available for operating and so on?
Uh, I'm sorry to say off the top of my head, I don't know the answer. I'm sure we could find the, get the answer, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, well, thank you. So I gather there's one endowment, and within that, there are some restrictions as opposed to there being multiple. Endowments for this, for that, the other.
So let me see if I can add some color to that. I I call it the endowment. Within the endowment, there are various. Dedicated funds that are named this family, this family, this purpose, this purpose. So. It's all the endowment, but not every dollar in the endowment has the same purpose. There is a general endowment fund. I I apologize. I don't remember the exact balance in that. I don't happen to have it in front of me, but. The Reitman Education Fund is a part of the endowment. I don't remember the balance of the Reitman Fund, but that's one fund. There are multiple other funds like that within the endowment as well. All of those comprise that total endowment balance.
Okay, good. That makes sense to me. Former Director of Development at Rutgers University, full disclosure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It sounds like you're somebody who might want to work on this committee with us then, but we'll we'll onto that for later. Yeah.
Yeah, that's another offline.
I was gonna say you have.
It's a five-year sentence at the Blaustein School.
Two people you might want to consider.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay. Great. Again, if you have more questions about the endowment and and its purpose, or how we use it, or how we um, how it's broken up, we have. No problem sharing that information with you. Just reach out and let us know as part of our uh, transparency. Okay. Allison?
Sorry, Marvin, by the way. I'm just taking notes. Sorry. Thank you, Marvin.
Very well.
We appreciate, really appreciate it. Um, okay, Rabbi Basley, we're going to move on to you, and you're going to give us an Israel update.
Sure. So um, right now, I'm about to drop into the chat, and we'll put it in the message that we send out to everybody, a link. The link that I'm dropping in right now is our rescheduled Anshamath trip to Israel. I'm really excited by this. Rabbi Miller and I have been talking um, with J-Square Adventure about the the rescheduling of it. We uh, confirmed it. Uh, just uh, what, two days ago, Rabbi Miller? Um, uh, and.
Yes.
Uh, hold on, I'm just trying to mute people who. Uh, Jen, if you're able to mute people who who are um, making noise, that'd be great. Um. Rabbi Miller and I uh, could not be more thrilled about being able to take the congregation to Israel. Because we believe there's no more important time for our congregation to go to Israel than now. And to. Grapple and to support our fellow Jewish brothers and sisters and Israelis who are who are there and dealing with what's going on. Um. I know Rabbi Miller recently, uh, at the beginning of of the war, um, went on a mission to Israel. Um. Debbie Kohn uh, just came back from volunteering with SARL and and was sending reports that were just unbelievable. I know um, Mickey Landis is is either about to start at SARL or just started at SARL. Um, and I'm uh, scheduled to go on a mission at the end of March. Um. The trip that Rabbi Miller and I have for you uh, is one where. Um. We are not just doing the sites that we were planning to beforehand. Uh, but it is restructuring a way to also be a semi-mission slash solidarity trip. And within it, there are also, and I want to invite everybody to to look at the itinerary. Um. Not only places where we're where we are there to. Um. Um. To help support our Israeli brothers and sisters. But also to meet with Israelis who are uh, Arab and Muslim and Christian as well, and and to talk with them about what life is like there too. Um, this is going to be an incredibly powerful trip, and. One of the things that. I have been struggling with in the response to the war that we're seeing around us in America. Is that people who have no idea what they're talking about are talking about what's going on. Um, as if they are educated in. The origins of the conflict and what's going on with what's actually happening. Um, and part of the importance of us going is not just telling our Israeli brothers and sisters that. We see them and that we're here with them and that they are not alone, which is an incredibly important message to share. Um. But to also report back what we're seeing and to be witnesses. Um, and yes, we're having many of the same first timers experiences, and. The the returners are having wonderful experiences as well. Um. And some of you know, I I was away for um, President's Day weekend. And I was in the Orlando Airport and. Um. We were checking in. At the gate. And there was this gentleman next to me who um. Uh, was a foreigner. And was trying to figure out what does he do with it? Like, how does he tape up the um, the baggage claim label to his suitcase? And uh, he says to me, I don't know how, you know, this works. Can you help me? And I show him how you do the sticker and you put it around the handle. And I say, if you have your your ticket, you know, you you put this, you stick this to the ticket, so you have your baggage claim scan. And he says, oh, I've got this, and he pulls out his passport, and he quickly hides the cover of it. But I saw enough of it to recognize. That it was the cover of an Israeli passport. And you could see the menorah. For just a split second. And um, you know, I I help him put on the back and I say. Where are you from? It's like, oh, I'm here. I'm here. I'm like, I saw the cover of your your passport. And I I smile at him, and he has this look of fear. Not knowing what's going to happen. I say, manishma, and he just lit up. And he's been on the speaking tour in America, trying to talk about what's going on and and raise support and awareness. And he has said, I have never felt so afraid of being in America and letting people know I'm Israeli than I am right now. And. We spoke in Hebrew for a little bit. And I I wished him well, and he wished me well, and. The stranger that we we just met at that moment, he gives me a big bear hug. Um, and said, it's it's good to know that I'm not alone. There are a lot of Israelis feeling alone right now. This is aside from how you might be feeling that the state of Israel, the government is reacting poorly or not, or or what's going on. But this is about human beings and how they are dealing with a terrible tragedy and an unfolding terrible tragedy as well. This trip is incredibly important for us to go on. Because it helps co. Helps connect the diaspora jury with the Israeli jury. And the people of Israel. And what this trip is really about. Is showing an important solidarity with the people of Israel more than anything else, to see the land, to see the sights, to to be connected. Some of us for the first time to our Jewish homeland. But to also be connected to the people in really strong and powerful ways. Both Rabbi Miller and I. We want to show a massive supportive coming. Last time we were going to bring fifty, we're hoping to bring a hundred this time. I hope you're all have clicked on during my my little spiel. I I hope you've all clicked on the link. And have submitted that you're interested in going. And and will join us. Um. You will be safe. You will be cared for. And you will come back with memories of being with your rabbis and being in your Jewish homeland that. That you'll never, ever forget. Rabbi Miller, do you have, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Uh, I think you said it all.
I'm trying to.
You said it all, and you said it powerfully. And I I would just add that there are congregations now around the country that are like us are organizing. This, we hope this war will come to an end soon, but the long term impact of the war uh, will remain. And um, and Israelis need us now. They have never, as Rabbi Basley said, they have never felt more alone. And unfortunately, that's going to continue for quite some time because it's being used as a political wedge against the administration. Uh, and our own government. And so we need uh, we need to make not only a stand, but to make a statement. That at least a a hundred of us from our congregation went and shared together with all of the. The people who we so dearly love. And um, so as Rabbi Basley said, please sign up, come and join us, and tell your friends. Uh, in the congregation and friends who are not in the congregation, come and join us as well. Let this be from our whole community led by Anshay Emeth. And to the rest of uh, to to the rest of the community. Thanks.
Absolutely. If you have friends or family that that are interested in going, sky's the limit. Um, I just posted it. Um, make sure you click the link before uh, the Zoom call ends, so you can check out the itinerary. It is. A powerful itinerary. Um, and it's it's going to be. An incredible adventure, and we'll have more um, going out to the congregation and another orientation and. And do everything we did last time to 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 bring people in, but just. Keep spreading news about this.
Great. Thank you, Rabbi, rabbis. Appreciate it. Yeah. Uh, so I would encourage everybody to to try to carve out the time for that strip, November second. To the tenth, twenty twenty four, which will catch up with us before we even know it. Um. So that's the end of our formal agenda, and I'd like to just open up the floor for some Q and A.
Uh, you can either unmute yourself and speak, and I'll find you and highlight you, or you could do the raised hand thing. Oh, and um, I see Amy is on as well. Amy Sosa was uh, with Debbie Cohen at uh, SARL. You you guys were doing amazing things, amazing things. Uh, David?
Yes, um, thank you very much. Uh, could you comment on the um, uh, the issue, the charter school leaving? What's the timing of that? What's the financial impact to the temple? Uh, and things of that nature?
Sure. Do. Allison, um.
Elise is happy to address any questions about the Chargers School.
There you are. I found you.
Hi, David, um, and others. So um, at this moment. We are pretty confident that they're going to stay through the end of June. Um, we've, the rabbi and I have spoken with them. Um, and um, at this point, although we don't have a. Definite answer from them based on some of their responses to questions and interactions, it looks like um. They will likely be here through the end of the school year, so June.
And I'm not sure if everybody's ever, if everyone's met Elise. Elise is one of our officers. She's the, our recording secretary. And she has been involved with some of the discussions with the school, so. Um, we thought we could let her be the face of that messaging. Any other questions?
Debbie? And welcome back to America, you and Amy.
Thank you. Hi, I was hoping to be jump on top of uh, what you you had just said, but I searched high and low for this stupid raised hand thing. I just wanted to add that, yes, I, Amy and I just came back from three weeks volunteering in Israel, and I wanted to add to. What Rabbi Basley said. Please go. They, they, I mean, when when we would tell people we were there because we cared about them, they would start crying. I mean, they, I can't even tell you, but the fact that we were just in Israel, um, they said, why? And what we said, because we want you to know you're not alone. That's how they feel. They feel that we don't know what's going on there. Not that we don't know that there's a war, but they don't even know how it impacts us, that we care so much, that we. Hang on the news, that we listen to every detail, and and they go, really? Really? You came, really? And they, they can't, they can't get over it. And it's so. In a way, it's heartbreaking because you want to, you want to just put your hug around the entire place. And meanwhile. Meanwhile, you will feel so safe. It's just ironic, but you will feel so safe, and you will feel so not worried about being there, and. And the importance to just be there. I mean. We were volunteering, but just being there in a restaurant, for example, and you, they always ask you, why, you know, why are you in Israel? You have family here. We say, you're our family. And and they just can't get over that you're there, and they can't get over that you want to be there. They just feel so alone and so isolated, and they don't even realize. That diaspora Jews. Are so attached to them right now because they they feel that they're in this bubble, and they don't know, they know we have a lot of antisemitism here.
Yeah.
But they don't know how we feel about them, and not to to come during a war, especially for us. I mean, God willing, there's not going to, it'll have been over by four months by the time this trip's. Happening, but it still won't matter because they really need to know that you care and that you're there for them and that you want to be with them and uh. You know, not for nothing, but just being there and spending money is going to really help them because. You know, the the stores are too empty, and uh, nobody's buying souvenirs and things like that. But I just can't, if anybody wants to ask me, you know, how did it feel to be there? How did you feel unsafe? Did you feel worried? No, no, and it was wonderful to be there. It was really wonderful to be there. I can't wait to go back. I think Amy feels exactly the same way, and. Um. You know. If you have any reluctance, you're so needed there.
Um, before Amy, before you say something, I want to just thank the two of you for being there to represent those of us who can't get there right now. Um, so thank you for everything that you did and for all the time that you spent there. It was really, it made me feel good to watch you all that you were doing while you were there.
Yeah, well, thanks. We did it. I think Amy would say the same. We did it for ourselves. We did it because it became easier to go than to stay because we couldn't stand not doing anything anymore.
So.
But but being there was really a privilege. Now, Fred had to put the little hand down.
If you um, had signed up for the trip last year for last November. Um. Whether or not you told them to hold on to your money or to refund you and that you still wanted to go again, you still need to log on to that link. And register. That way they have you in the system. If you um, told them to keep your money, even apply it to the next trip, you just need to register and. Let them know, and they'll transfer everything over. So. It. Do it now before you forget. Okay.
Uh, go ahead, Amy.
Oh. Amy, where'd you go? Amy. You need to unmute yourself, Amy.
There, did it? Okay, absolutely. I second everything Debbie said. Um, one day we were walking down the promenade from our hotel, the Yaffo, and I ended up talking to somebody. And then his friend came out and we said, and he explained again, why are we here? What are we doing? And she said, I think you're absolutely crazy, but thank you so much. I love you and just hugged us. I mean, these are strangers, you know, and they're like, what are you doing here? And we're like, we're here for you. So everything Debbie said, I second. And I also want to say for those of you who, who are interested, SARL is the most amazing experience you will ever have, among the most amazing experiences you'll ever have. Um, I think all of us who served there were just astounded at how healing it was for us to be there, that we felt we were doing something. Um, you know, Debbie uses the phrase that it was easier for us to be there. And I almost want to say that for some of us, it was more like being homing pigeons. Um, we were there and we had to be there. And being there with others who felt as we did, given so much of what goes on in this country. Um, it, it was so healing and so nurturing. And people are like, were you afraid? I'm like, no, not, no. I mean, even during the red alert, I have to say, you know, that hap, you, you're fear such there is comes later, but you're with your family, your extended family and just seeing the young soldiers and meeting them, you know, and posting about it. Um, there is such a celebration of life there. You might not think it, but everywhere we went, the Israelis were so positive upbeat, positive in the sense of celebrating life, embracing life, finding the joy. I'm not going to say they're positive about politics or other things, but it is what they do there. Love life and, and go because there's no question the economy needs it, but also go for yourselves, like Debbie said, and, and I, I think you'll find it incredibly healing, moving, powerful. And I thank Rabbi Miller so much for giving me that suggestion back in, in November. Um, it was, it, it was great. And yeah, Debbie and I are already making plans to go back and do it again. Um, it's, it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you to the both of you. I, I really appreciate you sharing and, and sending all those messages about what you're up to and and uh, being our representatives there. And uh, I, I want to point out that in this, um, the new iteration of our trip to Israel, there's a big focus on meeting the diverse, the diverse um, population of Israel. To, to break a misnomer that there's only one type of Israeli, but to really show that there are a lot of Israelis linked together who look different and think different and act different and, and pray differently than one another in a way that that the previous trip didn't highlight in the same sort of way. This is going to be a remarkable trip that I, I, I hope everyone on this call will join us for. Other questions? I'm going to post that um, link one last time and please click on it.
If any other questions do come up after the fact, you guys certainly know where to find us. And I'm going to just thank everybody for their time and thank you for joining us and we'll see you again soon.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Rabbi. Thanks, Allison.
And welcome to our new staff. We're so happy you're with us.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome.